That's, that's good. Yep. No, right there is perfect. That way we get everybody.
Thank you.
What's that?
She's hard of hearing.
Okay.
So when we speak tonight, everybody please speak individually.
Okay.
Loud enough so she can hear and slow.
Okay, it's good to know.
Thank you.
Um, thanks for having me. The D O D. Very strange map. It overlaps. I don't know whether, what that means. Like your overlap, the line could start again.
No, his phone's not muted.
Yeah, I didn't, very odd, no, it's actually overlap.
Yeah.
Hey, Dave. 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 Phone's not muted, you're back feeding.
Yeah.
I can mute.
Is that working? I guess I'm muted now. Okay, sorry about that.
No, I hear you.
How much do we have to move out of? Low.
How many loads?
Yeah.
We haven't contracted any of those.
Enough, all right.
Enough, I mean, we didn't fill properly well, thankfully.
You got enough room, huh?
Yes, yep. If I, half of the one area that I had was filled, then the secondary that was proposed, the touch side, yes.
Okay. That's right.
Except the one out there that there was down here.
Right. Hmm, it's not bad.
I hope so. Cleaned the truck all up today. Full truck dumped it off the blue ground, so we probably jinxed ourselves.
Yeah, a little easier than that.
The beautiful. Kind of did what we could.
We got more capacity in our life.
What's that?
Two thousand eleven, we put one people in there.
Yeah, as long as we can make the initial distance and things.
Oh.
I think the mandate's twenty-five, right? As long as you're spaced.
Yeah, as long as you're spaced. Mm-hmm.
Distance, distance more than anything.
Yeah, we can go up to twenty-five now.
Texas, I could kiss ya.
That's a funky chair.
Oh, thank you. And wheels. Don't take that with me.
This is just this time. What's that, try to do this, this timing?
Hi. How are you? Is this thing over here?
Hi, everybody.
Hello. What's that?
Just the three minutes.
Well, I said, um, come on.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, before we, um, before we begin our meeting tonight, just want to remind everyone, those of you who are participating via phone, uh, please keep your, your microphones muted, um, unless addressed in the board. Um, we do have a hearing impaired.
Yeah.
Uh, we do have a, a, a hearing impaired person participating in our meeting tonight, so please talk clearly and slowly, if possible, please. All right, uh, village, Black Earth Village Board Meeting called to order Tuesday, March second, two thousand twenty-one, at six oh two P M. Roll call, please.
Jared Bramerson.
Here.
Ms. Hudson.
Here.
Dean Foyle.
Here.
Doc Walsh.
Here.
Scott Patterson.
Here.
Joy Uther.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
All right, we have a forum. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda item three, proof of posting. Copy of the notice of this meeting was delivered on February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Passed to Star News, posted at the Black Earth Municipal Building, and posted at the Black Earth Post Office, posted on the Black Earth Village web page, and passed for posting to State Bank of Cross Plains, Black Earth Ranch. Meeting was duly posted. Agenda item four, public comment. Is anyone from the public wishing to address the board? David, please, uh, state your name and address, please.
David Stanfield, town of Vermont, ten nine hundred Stanfield Road. I just saw an agenda today, a discussion of the substation, and that was very interesting to me. We had, uh, about a year ago, a discussion of a possible solar, uh, storage facility, looking at the possibility of that, and one of the questions asked was, what, what investments in the substation would be necessary or could be done through that, that, that exercise? So I was interested in that topic particularly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Any other public comment? All right. Agenda item five, five A, discussion action on forest or substation review. Bruce?
Um, hello.
Oh.
I don't know where to stand, but.
You want that?
Right, being over the road, to angle right.
At some point, I, I want to turn this so you can see, but also the camera can see, so it's sort of at an angle. And, um, so anyway, it's been five years since I've had the pleasure of being in front of the board, and I think it was really the Vanguard board, but I think the Black Earth board was, was invited to that meeting. This is five years ago when we were talking about whether Vanguard made sense for Black Earth and for Mezzomani, that was a kind of a joint study. As part of that study, we looked at your electric utility and, uh, really did a system study. Uh, we left one thing undone, I would say, and that's what I'm here to finish five years later. But just think of all the things that have happened, you know, the positive that has happened in the last five years. Shaun is the big positive, right? And all the things that have gotten, have gotten done since then. Um, the finances are, are probably on better footing. Shelley, you correct me if I say wrong. Um, but, uh, the, uh, yeah, so just kind of the, the big overview of your electric distribution system. You're like eighty, there's eighty-one cities or villages in the state of Wisconsin that own their own electric distribution system. And that's much like other municipal services, you have like water and sewer and, um, streets and things that you provide, um, to the residents of Black Earth. The electric's a little different, though, in that, you know, your distribution territory is on steroids. Like a lot of villages and cities, Mezzomani being one, um, just serve within the, the village limits, um, a little bit outside of it, but, uh, you, you go, you know, here's, here's Black Earth, and you go way out here, almost to Mount Cora, then you go way out here, uh, to Besty Park and, and, you know, as far as M D N E, and then you go all the way to, to, um, Mezzomani. So you, you cover a lot of rural area besides the village of Black Earth. That's kind of unique. It's a, it's somewhat of a challenge in that, uh, you have to build a lot of infrastructure and to serve a, a fewer number of customers when it's spread out so much. If it's all compact, well, it's, it's a little less costly to, to serve, but the infrastructure is, is less per customer or per kilowatt, hour sold, you know? So that, that's a challenge, uh, you know, but it's one that, that other utilities need. And if you look at the state, there's, there's several other, um, municipal utilities that serve outside of their boundaries. This is like gold, by the way. If you ever, if you ever had a territorial battle with your neighboring utility, they have this kind of cushion to, for the village to grow. If you add another subdivision to the south or to the, you know, wherever you decide to grow, you don't have to battle for it, um, the territory with another utility. As you, as you annex to the village, you're going to be able to extend those municipal services to those areas. Um, one challenge that I, I would say that, for them, besides the financial one I mentioned, and I'm not going to get into finances, um, but the, the amount of territory, exposure, and you don't feel things, kind of, but, and so they, that, all of this area that's covered, um, the probability of something going wrong somewhere in here and affecting a lot of customers. I tried to use these colors, actually, these are the maps that you guys did with County Country that worked out really nice. So these colors kind of pop here. This purple area, I could have a fault way up here, and this, well, at least the southern part of the village is going to have an outage, until they go out here and find it and fix it. Now, there's some devices that might segment that, but you're all going to see the light blink. Maybe you won't have a long outage. Out here, out here are all affecting people in the village. So that's one thing to note, is we, is we look at different options here, and I'll say what the, the problem is. That's not the problem, but it is kind of one of the key features of why we recommended the option we did. There's only one feeder, and unfortunately, it's hard to see. This is red, and this is purple, or pink, or magenta. It almost looks like the same thing, but there is kind of the west village circuit, I'll say, that is, uh, doesn't have a lot of exposure, just goes out to the B T here on the way out of town. That, that's a, that's a fairly, I mean, probably a better performing circuit for you guys. Lot of underground, not a lot of exposure. That would be a good example of what, what could be with the option we're going to recommend. So what's the problem? What's the thing we didn't discuss? When we looked at the two utilities, Mezzomani has two, two substation transformers. And when I say substation, um, transmission lines pass through, right? They, they're coming from Cross Plains through Black Earth, to Mezzomani, goes onto Spring Green. That transmission line is connected to the statewide grid. People put, um, generation on there, and people take load off of there. How you connect to a transmission line is through a substation. Me, Mezzomani has two of them, you have one. And one of the things that we said was, you know, Vanguard, it makes sense to have an electric crew and a, and a, and equipment and an inventory that is shared with your neighboring village, and then, um, divvy down the costs, and especially makes sense if that investment is made into building plant. And I'm sure Shelley can explain this. When we first met, you know, we talked about how are you booking the value investment you have in the plant? Now, the way that you maintain, this is perverse in a way. I, I'm not an accountant, and I, that's why I can take, take this in vain, right? Those left aren't accountants. The, the way to keep your rates low is to continually reinvest in plant. The Public Service Commission allows you to earn a rate of return, albeit fairly low, on the investment you make in plant. They're looking out for the public, so you want to make sure you don't run this into the ground, that you don't end up having to invest a lot of the money down the road, but you do it a little bit at a time. So we're looking for things that you can invest in each year. As you depreciate some value, you reinvest it, and then you can maintain constant rates. It's kind of perverse that in order to save money, to, to keep the rates low, you have to spend money. The idea of saying, I can save money by not spending it, that works in a lot of other utilities, but it doesn't work in the electric utility. So we were looking for ways to reinvest slowly in ways that you could afford, and we identified lots of rural areas that, you know, there was a line that went through here that nobody could get to. That's all gone, thanks to Shaun. It's, it, there's a lot of things that have been improved, like underground lines where, you know, tree trimming would have been a lot more expensive maintenance-wise. And those, those investments you've been making over the last five years have set you up well, and you should continue to make those. Shaun will probably come with best budgets each year and ideas for you or to, to reinvest. But the one thing that we just kind of ignored and hoped would never happen is that you only have the one substation. And if the substation, um, has to be taken out of service, this entire territory has to be outdaged until you fix it. That's, uh, you know, what happened the other, the other day, like, uh, something burned up inside, so I think the fuse melted in half, and there was a fire. I saw the video you sent me, and I go, this is just what I didn't want to see happen, right? And within an hour, a little more than an hour, I think, you have the lights back on. You know, that doesn't happen more than once, you get, you're lucky. You know, it, it wasn't something that got damaged, we could find something to replace it, um, but there are other pieces of equipment in that substation, which if failed, you know, it takes over a year to get replacements. And yes, there are other utilities and other substations, but borrowing from other utilities and putting in here is like days, if not weeks. There are portable substations, but everybody wants that portable substation that Alliance has somewhere parked, but they have it in use a lot of times, and it, it's just not an easy thing to recover from. So, you know, I always say it's better not to have any substations than to have one, because, you know, at least if there's none, you know, it's not your problem, somebody else's problem. But if you have one, it's kind of the worst-case scenario. While we thought, in the study, we just threw out the possibility, Mezzomani has plenty of substation capacity. You have plenty of substation capacity, but no contingencies. If something happened that you needed something in a pinch, we, we thought, what if Mezzomani built a line and tied it to yours? You put a, a, a point here, you know, it's a, um, by rookies, and say, this is where we'll, we'll sell power back in front of each other? The problem was, you would have had to make an investment in this, this line all the way back into town to rebuild it in order to make it work, you know, appreciably, for most of the, most of the year, it would work. Um, even parts of the day, it would work. Now, what could happen? Um, the solar thing. I'll, I'll kind of put that in here. We, we've been designing substations to accommodate solar and batteries. The microgrid concept, um, is a thing of the future. It, so far, has required some sort of rotating machine to back up the battery as, as well as the, the solar panel, so like a, a natural gas generator would help bridge the gap. Um, the solar, of course, charges the batteries, the batteries are used when the sun's not shining, but there's going to be some points in time where there's going to need to be some other source of power. And certainly, that's going to help, um, it, but it's not going to be the backup for a substation transformer for the events that I'm talking. You know, ties to other utilities would be a, a great investment, and that's one we estimated in the last study. Lo and behold, um, what, Alliance Energy has a substation in Mezzomani on Hudson Road. Mezzomani used to buy power out of that one, and now they don't. So Ma, uh, Alliance Energy has a little extra capacity there. They, they gave us very similar proposal to what Mezzomani could have done for you. And that's in the back of this report, and that's kind of what precipitated this. You think this is worth pursuing? Well, um, with injecting power here and injecting power here from Alliance, um, you still couldn't get full backup. So we looked at an option, to be fair, is to rebuild this line, at least part of it, or if not all of it. That's what I would call option C, and you could just barely get to your peak load. So what, what happens there? Option C. You send money to get from here to their substation, about four hundred thousand. You, um, may have to spend another eight hundred thousand to rebuild this. And then you get, um, you have to pay for the capacity in this substation. You have to pay as an expense, you know how bad that is, and an expense here for a substation that was upgraded in Mount Cora, and the line all the way up to Mount Cora. Your share of those facilities, um, you pay on an annual basis, maybe a monthly basis, maybe annually. So when you look at option C, uh, it has nearly as much expense as building your own substation, and it comes with an annual cost. And then, essentially, you're renting somebody else's facilities, and that is not the way to make a solvent utility. It's the, um, go back to what I said originally, is, uh, you, you make constant reinvestment in your plant, and that gives you the money to operate the utility and, and keep the cost low. By writing a check to another utility, you're not going to keep the cost low. So I think if you ran that through with the accountants and such, even if it was a tie after the first year, over time, it's going to be a bad investment. So we said, all right, maybe we ought to look at a backup transformer, um, or as another substation, or an addition to the existing substation. Option A is the, uh, a brand-new substation in town. Uh, option B is a new substation adjacent to the existing substation. I don't know if you've been here, you lived here a long time, you may have noticed maybe twenty years ago, uh, the substation used to be next to where it is now, and it was rebuilt next to it, and then the place where it was vacated is now used as a storage yard. So I guess, to be fair, with option B, we're going to put a substation back where it used to be, and you're going to have to find some other place for storage, right? So I didn't count the cost for another storage yard, maybe I should have. It's, option B, well, here's, here's your substation, it's right there. Parnell, was it farm next to it?
Peral.
Peral, thank you. Um, it, it, it's, it's right on seventy-eight, it's, well, it's, 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 it's town, so. Um, that's, that's your existing substation, and, um, if we put a second transformer there, it would simply be as a backup to the existing one. When one's out, you switch to the other. If you have four feeders out of there now, you get this kind of bluish-green one, you got the green one, you got the red one, you got the pink one, um, we would take two on one transformer and one on the other, two on the other transformer, and you'd have the same, um, performance of the system in terms of, you know, the exposure you have on each feeder. If instead, and so, I'm going to flip the map now. I wanted to give credit to this one, because you guys did a nice job on this map. I made one five years ago that's not as nice as yours, but I started using it for the, the study here, because I, it was easier for me. And I started with my crayons. Same, same idea, I've got the, the white, the blue, the green, the, the purp, the pinkish, purple, and the red. But I, what I did here is I showed another substation, and it's not too far away, it's on the east side of the village. Somewhere, you know, the transmission line leads that direction, so it'd be somewhere by the transmission line. And in doing so, you get to split the feeders up onto seven feeders instead of four. So you still have this rural area, you still have this rural area, you still have this rural area, but you're going to have a new, like, east-north village circuit, and Shaun's got a great idea to put a re-closer up here as at least town, so you get less, you know, trips on, in town, maybe with the right coordination, we can get less exposure to the rest of the orange people, which goes off the quick trip. Then you still have the, the north, east, the northwest village, which goes up to the utility shop and, and the shoebox and such. And then you'd have a, a south village circuit without exposure to the rural, um, system. The, and then we'd have this east circuit, would be only east of town, not through town, so this, this would be a rural, but with less exposure, and these two roads would stay about the same. The potential for another feeder. The potential for another feeder between the two, so if you did have more subdivisions to the south, we'd be able to split it up on another circuit. So here's the advantage. Build a substation. I'm going to let Eric walk through the cost because he did a lot of work on that. But build the substation, and in a new site, don't worry about kind of fit it into a small constrained site. It's available with a couple of switches to switch load from one to the other. It would be set up for solar. If that ever, you know, if you could come up with a proposal, the solar is great. We've been putting them in and just taking advantage of the energy that's available. The battery technology is a little pricey yet, but it's going to come down. And I think the microgrid concept is a wave of the future. I'm always open to, you know, consider those things, and the substation would be the natural place to connect it, unless there's a better place with better sun, or you could even put a wind turbine if you're up on a hill somewhere. You know, there's lots of potential for the future. Right now, the wholesale power market is pretty low, and it's been tough to compete with that. You've got a great deal of Alliance Energy selling the wholesale power. So I just, you know, we just got to keep our options open. The substation would set you up for that, especially a new, brand new one. You could set it up the way you want it. And with a few switches, you're back in business. You wouldn't even know it. You could actually, this one is, I'm guessing about early 2000s when ATC first formed, is when this substation was last taken out of service. The transformer was replaced. Since then, unless you had, like, I think you had to shut it down the other day because something was about to melt, and you recognized it and took it out of service, but you had to shut everybody down to do it safely. You know, I'd rather say, let's take an outage once in a while and do some maintenance on a transformer. I'd have that ability if I have another one in town. So when we looked at options A, B, and C, which are enumerated in the report, you see that option A is the best value, I'll say. It comes with an upfront cost, but no annual, you know, continuing cost to other people. You put that in your books. You know, there are other options we could consider if you can't afford it. We could the cross-the-fingers approach, hope this never happens. There's like maybe partial backup. But I would challenge you to look at whether spreading that cost out over the life of a 50-year asset is, you know, is a way to spread that cost out and make it affordable. So really, you're going to have to take this to an accountant to see whether you can afford it. But I think from an engineering standpoint, it's by far the best value for the village.
Can you give me an example of a worst-case scenario if option B would be?
Okay. Option B is to have the substation at the same site. It's not, if you still have every one of the feeders has a tie to another feeder, and you still accomplish that, you still have the backup, it accomplishes most everything. The problem is that it's all or nothing, because you're coming from the same location, and I go south, I'm going to come from this transformer or this transformer. I'm not creating these extra circuits, I'll say, the village circuits. What option A adds, and it's very subtle, but you know, what you get is the more traditional municipal electric distribution system, where the village is only having the exposure of the village. And you're not being penalized for living in black earth and serving a rural area. You're on a separate circuit. You're not influenced by the rural area, but you still have the territory and you serve it. So B would still have some of those rural areas on with the village. I don't know if that's a worst-case scenario.
I was going to say, I didn't answer my question.
Yeah.
I think the worst-case scenario, by the way, I'm Eric. I'm from Bruce here.
Go for it.
Yeah. So I guess I'll try to answer your question, too. One thing, when we talk about, you know, preferred ways to operate an electric system, you try to think of, unfortunately, doomsday scenarios, the worst-case scenario that you referred to. It could be a weather event.
Like a magnetic pulse?
Let's hope not. Let's hope that's not the case. It could be as simple as, you know, there was a situation in the substation the other day, from what I understand. If that would have cascaded, you know, if you do have two substation transformers in that close proximity, it could carry over into the other.
How far away do they need to be from one another for this to not happen?
The ideal situation, right? In a perfect situation, you'd have one on the other side of the village. I used to, I was a manager of an electric system, and we actually had four substations throughout our community. So I sympathize with Sean, or I can appreciate Sean's, what he's going through here with having one. I asked him how he slept because there were, I had sleepless nights of four of them. So, yeah, I hope that answered your question, Mark.
Substation faults, any fault that occurs in a substation is catastrophic. There might be a fault current and everything that's involved there, just getting rid of that source. It's so significant, I would think you would want to basically, I think, as far away as you can as possible if you're expecting that to be your backup.
The catastrophic failures, you know, there's a lot of failures of equipment. Insulation breaks down, explosions happen, and crash goes all over the place. But if you breach a tank and oil spills out and starts on fire, that's, and I've seen those, and it's bad. The soot and the oil, you have to sop up, you know, everything rubber melts. To recover from one of those is terrible. If it flows over to the next transformer, you know, then it could take out both of your paths of power. So what we usually do, if you're going to do that sort of thing, is to put a blast wall between them. We'll put oil containment. You know, maybe there's some things we could do for option B to give you as much reliability as option A, of putting it in a physically different location.
I think what that is, though, you go option B, and you have to put blast wall and oil containment and all that stuff, your cost is right up there on option A. So you start, you know, weighing out the options here and say, might just go and put a band-aid on something here to save $10,000, or am I going to do something right here?
Right.
So you sound like a bad option to begin with, right?
Yeah.
So the difference between A and B is $54,000, right? You're talking about keeping the power on, I think it's kind of.
On that, I agree. I just wanted to know when it's going to stop.
The condition of our current station, should there be some kind of investment we need to be looking into?
Well, it's not bad. The transformer is only 20 years old. They lasted 50 years old. It's made by a good manufacturer.
2003, I believe, right?
2003? Was probably in the recording, but you may have remembered where everyone it happened, right? In fact, it was made as a dual voltage transformer in case ATC ever made it 138kV, you wouldn't have to replace the transformer. So it's there for the long haul, and it's not been overloaded. It's about a little more than half-loaded. So it's got a lot of life left in it. I think with proper maintenance, you can make it last another 30 years.
We do monthly inspections, and then also yearly, we got a contractor who comes in those gas tests oil, test gas, and all that stuff inside the transformer, which is kind of that additive preventative, just in case something pops up. And he does vibration tests, and Bruce knows all those tests, but they do give us a report, so that's.
Question for you.
Yeah.
Does your option A include land acquisition in this number?
There is some land acquisition, and I'll be honest, what we did is, we looked, kind of had some other land acquisition costs that we had, applied a factor. I think we put about $45,000 roughly into that. Without knowing 100%, you know, what land is going for in black earth, we had to, we included some costs in there for you.
What do we need to build it space-wise, half acre?
An acre would be nice. Yeah. 208 by 208 is, you know, that's generous. And I know if you get a little bit more and do some landscaping, it's not always a bad thing. If you want to get more storage, if you want to get room for battery systems and stuff, it wouldn't hurt to like think ahead, buy a little extra.
And so the original substation, then, is removed?
No, it stays. It would be the second half of the backup, so we're going to back each other up. So we wouldn't have to do much to the existing substation. And the new substation would add some new circuit breakers, circuit reclosers. That's partly the land and the circuit reclosers come for the difference. I mean, that difference at $54,000, you're getting something for that. That's probably the best value right there, is you're getting more circuits and you're getting more land.
And was the area flooding taken into consideration? Because that flood's bad there.
At the existing site?
Yep.
No, I hadn't. I mean, you know, we think that we could put it up, you know, up high enough with the, you know, the insulated parts above with the water.
I'd say it floods more than it don't probably.
Yeah. And that's more a case for operational, because, you know, you can't get in there and operate stuff when there's water all around. You don't want to be sitting in a puddle with a stick of Hudson 69.
Our department's got a boat.
Yeah, we have boats.
All right, one more question. I don't think I can answer this, but do you have any projections on what it would do to the utility rate pair? What kind of increase, percentage-wise, could we expect as a result?
You know, I've been, this is like, I've done 110 substations now, and you'd think I should be able to answer that question. I have found, and this is surprising, where we've done something that avoided a substation, and it raised the rate higher than if I did something that you made of the investment. And the trick is to bond for it and spread it out over the life of the rate payers who are going to benefit from your investment. And then your annual cost is reasonable. It doesn't lower your rate, puts the smithery in. Because there are times where if you don't make an investment, as you've known, then your rate of return is too high as a percentage of a decreasing number, and you can't raise the rates, even though you're not making money. You're not covering your costs. And you got kind of close to that edge, and you've come back from it. And I don't want you to go way over to the other side, you know, and make a huge investment. But this is a smart investment, and, you know, this is one of those high-impact but low-probability kind of investments. A lot of the other recommendations we had were probability but less of an impact. But this impacts the whole system, if it happens. And, you know, to say that it's not going to happen, I don't, I can't be truthful and say that it'll never happen to you because it does happen.
In the last year, we've had that substation on twice. That makes me a little nervous, so we'll see, guys, you know. Also, how many, I guess, the utilities that you deal with, Bruce, and we deal with a lot of them, as far as, how many have one substation?
You might need to know. So Ms. Larry says zero, and that's why I said it's lucky, but they're going to put their first one in this next year. And they're kind of in this situation, but we worked on a deal with Alliance where Alliance only has one transformer in the area, and they're going to help each other out if something happens. So that cost that you would have had to spend to tie into their system, for them to reserve capacity, they're saying, well, they have a need as well. It's very rare that Alliance has a need that they don't take care of themselves. Ms. Larry will be next year the other one that has one transformer. But they have a backup.
When we put that in, just so you know, Alliance had a tie, feeder tie from Mount Hore. And the last time they negotiated contract against MG&E, that was their plan, that they'd keep that in for us and make that available to us for almost ever, right? Which never happened. And that's why there was no backup substation. I never really thought of it before, because that was good for at least 70% of our capacity as a backfeeder, so.
They say in the back here, it's like 1 megawatt now, 1.2 or something megawatt. That's a, they rebuilt the substation in Mount Hore. This is still a heavy line. It still comes right up to your pole. There's a place to put a voltage regulator, metering, and a circuit recloser, and we could be back in business there, but you're only going to get 1.2 megawatts, and you're a 5-megawatt utility, so.
And as far as their cost, their yearly cost is pretty significant. I know they base it off of their assets, so they just rebuilt a bunch of stuff down by Mount Hore, correct? So that in turn increases the cost of their yearly cost, so.
Their yearly, yeah. We estimated their yearly cost for your village at about 100, just shy of $107,000. So, I mean, if you look at that over a 10-year period, you know, you've got substantial expense that goes to Alliance instead of investing in your own
Yeah, I think somebody helped them paper that line, because I think it was needed in order to change out that transformer in 2003. And I wanted to say, you can't charge us twice for that if you paid to put it in. Well, go ahead. So the report you have, you can read, it kind of talks a little bit of what I said. I kind of had listened a little bit, because I'm kind of passionate about trying to solve these type of issues in an affordable way. And I think by far, option A is the best value for you if you can afford it. So I'd strongly recommend you look and see, and we'll take the numbers we have, and I don't know if you can get Zach back at all, to look at this, but he can answer that question you asked me pretty quickly about what rating pack. He probably does that on his.
Probably does it.
He works for Vanguard on the side, so you might not catch him.
I know. He's at Beaver Dam now with them. Yeah.
Bruce, we got you. I guess, you know, you talked a little bit about solar, and you got a little experience with it. I guess, you look at our wholesale power rate, you look at the cost of solar, most batteries and all that, I guess, what, in your opinion, is it cost-effective?
In terms of energy, right. And Dave gave me a copy of this report, and I'm going to look at it. You know, at some point, as generation is coming off of the electric system at a statewide basis, all the big coal plants are going to go away. And there's utilities that are putting large-scale solar, but they still have to use the transmission system to get it to you. I understand the economics of having the generation be near where the load is. That's quite a significant investment at this point, and I don't know how, you know, if that would offset your wholesale rate, when that starts to happen, that's when it makes sense. And we just got to keep our eyes open for when that, we cross over, because it will at some point.
So do you know if any, are there any grants available as far as out there for utilities to?
Yeah, Eric, just apply for one.
For us?
Good, ladies and gentlemen. Yeah, PSP has the one that.
Yeah, there's, the PSP offered a grant. The components of the grant were solar and battery storage. It was capped as to how much you could apply for, and it was dependent on how much you actually contributed towards it. I don't know how we did. I can't tell you that, you know.
But that's for the solar. I mean, is there grants available for substations as well?
Okay, for the, for option.
If we're going to go option A, and we want to look at a grant option, are they available? Are they out there that?
Yes. There, and if you score well, and I, you know, I've yet to see a village that doesn't know how they score on those grants. But if you've been getting grants for other municipal projects, then electric would qualify as well. So those people who have been back, you know, they have a certain rotation, and they have some large investment, but at some point, they, this isn't the one you want to use that grant money for. You know, there comes the Davis Bacon Act on all the requirements for, you know, we've been through this before. If you score well, we could work with you to try to go after
Are there any other questions we can answer?
Did you say that the first one was, solar can work with the first one, too, or only the?
Probably only the first one.
Or only the first and not the?
With option B, if you look at what we tried to fit into a postage size lot, and, you know, I think it can be done, but it's going to be really cramped. And there's no room for solar unless you buy the farm next door. So with option A, I think we could plan it in there.
And how much more would that need, if there is?
It doesn't change the need for the backup substation. It doesn't change the need for the, for, for the backup substation though.
Just the size of solar field you're going to put in on the acres.
It's, it's an addition on, and it doesn't solve our problem.
So the battery systems that I've seen, that, you know, they come in semi-trailers, so, and then so, we are, as I've seen, it's, you know, there's going to be one on the, in the east side of the state, um, in Harrah's or something like that, in Buckton OSHA. And I'd like to see that one when it's done, because it's, that must be just fields of battery, um, canisters and.
Right.
Um, you know, it's double the size of your substation. We probably want to put a place for a natural gas generator, if there's natural gas even there. Is, is a, if, if you really want like a, a backup at all times. If you're just looking to put some solar panels up and take some free sun money, you know, and offset your, your wholesale bill, um, the, the problem is, you know, if you put it on your, on your personal rooftop and it's less than twenty KW, you, you get offsetting retail prices for it. But if you put it in what we're doing with the utility, you're going to offset wholesale prices. It's so darn low, it doesn't pay for it.
Right, exactly, you know, the payback, the use of payback are astronomical.
But you're expecting them to come back, is what you said, when coal is, so what year would that be, Evan?
Oh, boy, just a long, you know, I, the, the last three years have been, like, what I would have said three years ago, and what I say this year, I would not even have brought that up in a, a conversation like this, because I didn't think it was in my lifetime. Um, but it's going to be in my lifetime, it's going to be in the next ten years. I didn't think they'd close the fortage plant in a couple of years, you know, they, they were saying, it's in the future, it's in the future. It was always like this future thing that never was, had an end date. So these things are happening, the, the industry's changing. So we just got to keep our eyes open and, and roll with it.
And I guess just, you know, a, a final comment or a key takeaway for the, for the board to consider is that you need redundancy in your system, you, you need the extra backup. The best option in our opinion is, is the new substation. And A, it gives you flexibility, uh, to allow for, um, taking your current substation out for simple maintenance. It provides flexibility, you know, for future load growth, whether it's residential, commercial, industrial. And again, as Bruce said, you know, you have to run this past accounts to make sure that, um, you know, what kind of impact it's going to have on the grid here.
Any other questions, Ben?
If you do have any, or, you know, Sean knows where to find us, we're always at, right down the road, so, let's know if you need anything.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Guys, I'll take your picture.
Appreciate it.
Bruce, before you take off, can I touch you?
Any other boards to touch on, Bruce?
I guess I just feel like we need to figure out, take the next steps, talk to the accountant or whatever, to figure out what that impact's going to be, because it'd be one of those things that, you know, you know, we say that our transformer thing's potentially good for another thirty years, but if that's where everything goes right.
And what's the impact, so since it's the electric utility portion, what's our farming impact on the village itself?
That we, we would have to probably go off our revenue on, it wouldn't impact our geo-debt, but it's the revenue side of it, so.
So I like that you started looking at our next steps as far as investment.
Yeah, absolutely, um, the gal that did our PSC billing audit and rate case last has left the PSC and gone to a private firm, and she actually just reached out, I don't know, timing is impeccable, this morning. She would easily be able to take a look at this along with others, our financial advisors, to see what we could come up with. So I'm happy to reach out to her, start a conversation.
Well, maybe it's too early, but it's probably best to look at one option, is anyone interested in any good options? If, if, if the majority.
I'd take his advice, I would take his advice over everybody else.
I think A is definitely the right route to go.
It's setting the future up for this village, for expansion and support and sustainability.
Financially, I think it makes some whole time, you know, the, the cost of the three.
The USDA's got some things out there to talk about, you know, electric programs and basically direct loans, loan guarantees, all grants on our energy project financing to electric utilities, so, you know, that might be something to look at, just, if there's additional grants out there, if there's, you know, what the loan options are, whatever too, so.
And Bridget, when I was speaking from the PSC, actually brought that up this morning.
All right. Uh, agenda item five, be discussion action on Black Earth Elementary School.
Troy, do you care if I just give a little bit of, I just don't mean to throw you off.
Yep, nope.
Um, just heads up, we did, uh, we got a job listing for a lineman position. Uh, we got a new final candidate, uh, he's going to be coming on the sixteenth to our Vanguard meeting, meet the board, we're going to give him kind of final tour, and I hope that's going to be our, our new lineman, so. Kind of exciting there, look forward to that. Um, we just completed, uh, a bridge project, they're moving the bridge on Highway F and Double F. It's all the town there, so we had to move three poles. Um, that's all completed, ready to go for him, a little bit of work for him, although he's coming to do the bridge, but that's pretty minor. Um, we're doing a cold snap, we got all of our meter testing done, our yearly meter testing, so. They're going to test it out good, look at there. Other than that, we're voting, no.
Uh, question for you. Um, as far as our, our proj, you know, we have yearly projects.
Yep.
Is, are there some projects that we could postpone, put on hold, and put some of our budget money towards the subs? I mean, how much could we sacrifice from, from yearly projects?
Uh, this year, probably get seventy-five, eighty thousand on top of our costs, so, you know, we don't get a lot, but that, I mean, that gives us, you know, that's our project work, and that's not including our labor, so. Obviously, if we were doing a substation project, we wouldn't have that seventy to a hundred thousand that we're going to get for the year. Um, so we'd be focused on, on that project, but as far as yearly project work, we need that seventy to a hundred thousand. So at least you're contributing to that plant and everything, and if you're going out to bond, I guess that's something we have to be factored in there as well.
How much work would Vanguard have with this construction of this, uh, new substation?
We basically just built half the substation and made it, only did all ourselves, so, um, we've tried to do as much as we can, which I think would lower the cost on it.
Yeah, and, and if I ask them, I don't know, would that change anything, I wonder?
I mean, I'm sure he, he, he has everything priced for basically a contractor like that. We did all of our relay wiring and everything, which was kind of a learning curve for us, but it was awesome, we got to do it and kept it internal, and. So, yes, we'd be basically doing as much as we can, so. And obviously, a lot can change, prices, that's probably, prices, prices and timeframe.
Yep.
On materials, changing that a little, so. Yeah.
All right, any questions for Sean?
Thanks for recounting that.
Thank you.
All right, agenda item five, be discussion action on Black Earth Elementary School. Uh, the village board, uh, did, of course, this is a project to EDC, EDC did discuss this, uh, last meeting, and has a recommendation back to the village board for consideration.
Yes, and if everybody received that letter of interest, you know, the EDC committee members have seen this once already, but I did send it out, and there was a change made to it, there was an addition. And it was an addition for the request of, uh, Jordan at the school district, to put in some sort of a timeframe as to when they can expect, like, a final commitment from the village. Um, I just threw in, in the last, uh, line of this, uh, July first date, that's when they would ideally like to, uh, hear a commitment from the village. What this does is, of course, gets the ball rolling at the school district level for moving this through their system on acquisition. I don't know what it would look like on a financial side because of the investment that the village has already had with regards to the ball field, any demolition cost, or whatever we decide. Um, the school district has to discuss that once they receive this letter of interest and give the feedback back to us before we can move forward. Once that happens, um, this would require us to contact our village attorney to draft up documents if this is going to work, uh, and get that, of course, back to the school district, so.
So, they, I don't know what your expectations were from EDC, and EDC, of course, I mean, this is quick turn off from one meeting to the next. So there's not much investigation as far as all the possibilities. Uh, but the thought of EDC was because of the power, because of the parking lot, scenario with the ball dining and such, that really the village should go forward with somehow acquiring the school and property. If you're looking for more, I think, is one is, well, one is the school district's looking for some kind of answer, but if you're looking for more details and such, you know, is the board looking for more information from the EDC before that decision is made? Or, I mean, the other concept, if, if our own degree's actually before, the EDC then can then go back and then investigate all the different options, what to do with the property.
When do the financials become part of it? Because, you know, it's already a huge undertaking on our taxpayers to build a new school. And to add to it, just, it's like double taxing for the, for something they've already paid for, right?
So without knowing if the school's going to let us acquire the property, it's hard for us to make a financial investment and know any, anything on it. I mean, at the point we get a commitment from the school, yes, they're going to move ahead, then we should be looking at an architectural firm to get in there and take a look at the structure, to give us some kind of an idea of what it's going to cost to renovate it, or.
So you're saying, did you add to this draft?
I did, the very last, last line.
The last line, but this is complete in the way that you get it?
Yep.
Um, just out of, uh, it says, the village will continue to explore the financial investment of acquisition of the Black Earth Elementary School. I'd strike the financial investment, and I'd just say, continue to explore the acquisition.
Because we don't know the financials.
Right. Well, we already, we did already explore the possibility of demolition, we did get that proposal back, so that's one of the reasons.
Right, and, and that's part of the other financial impact, was fine, they're on top. This kind of needs an open end. To me, if I was sitting on the school board, so.
It also doesn't give us any, um, information about just acquiring the, the baseball field and maybe some parking information. It just said, we wanted, we want the school, well.
The EDC committee, um, discussed whether it would be part of it or a hundred percent, which is why it's a hundred percent in that letter.
Okay, but.
And the other question is, is there any, since we've spent a lot of money in the last year on the fields and all this area over there, is, if this would fall through, is there any way to recover some of our costs? Like, the money we've stuck into the property, so.
Just the only other thing I noticed was the address was wrong, it's eleven thirty-three, not nine fourteen.
I put it down by the co-op.
Yeah.
Mitch has got a great point, I mean, you could kind of use that as a bargaining tool.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
You're not going to let us, yeah.
I'm sorry, can you finish that sentence, I, I lost in thought, if you're not going to let us, but.
Well, basically, if the school doesn't think that was, you know, since we dumped so much money into it, they don't want to take that into consideration, maybe in the sale price, you know, then we should kind of go after them and say, there's got to be some type of revenue coming back to us for that, not necessarily revenue, but a payment back towards us, since we have done so much.
We had financial.
Their property, we had financial investment into the school's property, behalf of Black Earth Village. So if they don't want to see that fit as part of the sale, or maybe the purchase of the entire property, then I think the village would have to ask them for some of that money back.
I mean, yeah.
So, I have a question, though, with that being said, is it worth putting in, the, the investment the village already put in to that ball field? Because I know that number after.
And what was that number?
Well, I can get it from the engineer's side. I can get that number, because we have to break that out for the grant, so.
Yeah, you'd have to break that out per what the school actually owns.
I got to break out the path and the ball field.
Oh, it needs to be there, yeah.
So I can get that number.
But I think we need to think about that, okay, don't you?
And then, is there any paperwork at all about the agreement on the ball field historically? Since it was built in like sixty-two, or, I don't know what, like, did the ball field go in?
There was, uh, a memorandum done by Mark Alworthy, I don't know when, and it was for the school to take care of, uh, particular maintenance items as a result of letting the village use it. Um, that, I don't know when that was.
There's only maintenance.
But it was like for, uh, chalk, or, you know, it was minor.
Doesn't, I don't think any other foresight that the school would ever become closed.
I mean, it's not been that long, because that was a skating rink when I was younger, so.
Where the ball field?
Yep. Lung twelve.
At the landfill at one time, because we did find a bunch of stuff down there digging.
Probably.
Yeah, just a dump, so, scientific.
All right, so this letter then, we, um, proposes our interest. Kind of on the next board meeting.
Um, I think they're going to meet next week, Monday. Second and four, second and fourth Monday, I think.
I think so.
Yeah, I believe that's right.
All right, so we're looking to modify the letter, it'd be nice actually to, per se, if we're interested in sending this letter to approve it, or prove it, prove the draft.
Well, I think we did, right, we just said we changed the, the address to eleven thirty-three, and you just.
And strike out.
Strike out the financial.
And strike out the, the financial. I'll, I'll make a motion that we strike out the financial on the letter and send it.
And change the address to eleven thirty-three.
And change your ad- address.
Off second to the motion.
Motion by Mitch and a second by Josh, and we're discussing.
And we're all just a hundred percent for school, no other options?
Well, it's not buying you anything, you know, right now.
No, I, I know, it's without.
It's the whole property.
I know.
The EDC was, well.
I didn't even come back with any options, and it's.
Well, that's tough, though, I sat in on that meeting, and it's, there's a lot of options out there. That some, you know, I mean, we're going to have, you're going to have to look at it long-term, this, this isn't going to be a short run, this isn't going to be a dash at all, to figure out what's going to work best for. And I thought they did a great job in the committee of, of citing different, off the survey, you know, what, what, what a community needs, what's the community asking for? And then for, of course, the reality of how do we either bring private funds in or grant funds in? How does it look? You know, and that requires an engineer's consulting, so.
It's a tough piece of property with how it binds up, you know, up to that ball field, literally how the lines are and what. We have, what, what our intent is to use that ball field for, and how you have to, you know, it's really going to adjust that lot depending on what happens, and. So you can't look them bad right now, I don't think, with a bunch of options until.
Yeah, there's, there's going to be a way of. And the financial impact is the biggest, right? A lot of good ideas, so.
Yeah. I think until we hear back from the school, what they like, they could sell it, take a hike to. They may have a buyer.
So, so that's what, what I'm saying is, we're not even given the, the option to come back to us with just the ball field stuff.
Well, they could have.
We're saying we want the whole there.
They could if they wanted to.
But if they, I know, but we're not giving them, we're, we're just telling them, we want a hundred percent. If we can get just the ball field, why wouldn't we want to do that?
But they can corner, they, they can turn around, corner back to us and say, we're, we're going to just work, work with you on the ball field. So at this point right now, I mean, it'd be advantageous for the village to at least say, we're interested in that. We're not saying we're tied to anything right now.
And that's what the school district asked, they just wanted something from the village, letting them know, are we interested? They just wanted something from the village, letting them know, "Are we interested or not? Yes or no?" Just to get the discussion started at the school board level, for them to come back and say, "Okay, we want this to happen," or "No, we don't."
And everybody here is interested in acquiring the whole property?
I don't know.
We're not, we're not saying that yet. We're saying that, because you could play the middleman with the developer as you get going if things happen. Doesn't mean it's a, an acquiring, you know, the village right now doesn't acquire the whole thing right away.
Yeah, this is.
It's just a discussion topic, I mean.
It's not the expression of interest.
Yep, and that's why that date of July first was important in their due date, is because the school district would like to know what our full intent is by that time. So, without hearing back from them, if they're even going to work with us, we have some time to consider that question.
And I don't know my interest until I see the numbers, right?
And you want to go.
I just don't want to come back with just numbers with, for the whole thing. I want the option, if they feel like they want the, well, them to stay in the village too, I want that option, the numbers.
And maybe that's what they'll give us.
And, yeah, I know, that's maybe, not what we're asking them for, but what we're asking them for.
They just want to let her interest.
Just to get the discussion going. We don't have to send it. They can do whatever they want with that.
Well, no, that's, that's fine. We need to tell them that we have some interest in it, but I just don't feel like only seeing a hundred percent.
They may not buy it.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Post? Motion passes. And then, item five E, discussion action on codification of village ordinances. Kelly?
Okay, so last month when we discussed the codification of our ordinances, there was a question outstanding about any other legal fees that could be added to this. After talking to, of course, general code and even ours, I'm going to read what I was given here. So, I know you were in the Black Earth for original recodification, and I can't remember if you've been through one at your previous community. A good number of the things we find in the editorial and legal analysis are not things that would require an attorney's review. Where an attorney's input is needed, we will specifically state that the attorney should be consulted. Obviously, the village is free to have the attorney review as much or as little of the analysis as they desire. So, the original contract, I think Scott, you might have brought that up, was for thirteen thousand six seventy, way back in two thousand three. But they don't believe an attorney will have to review this unless we want it. So, any extra costs are going to be borne by the request of the board. The bid or proposal, if you remember from last month, was for five thousand one ninety-four.
I guess my concern would be with, most of this has been coming from our, our police and wording, whether it be excrement or, or parking, or, you know, proper wording that way. Are we trying to get into some kind of snafu with, with that department? Will they require us to have it worded a certain way, or?
It's not up to them.
Well, I realize it isn't.
They're just going to have problems because they're not worried how they, how they.
It always seems that they bring us a copy of Maisel's and say, "Here." And so, that's, that's my only concern.
And I know quite a few things that don't comply with the statutes of today, that reference statutes that aren't any good, that aren't valid anymore, so. Special enforcement code for fire inspections and things like that, they're, they're still on biller fifty, sixty, and they need to be SPS.
Although, I'm not sure we're writing it. I think we need to make sure certain ordinances are addressed. I mean, I mean, once it's done, I don't think.
I think we'll get the draft back, I hope, right?
Oh, yeah. The plan commission would be the one that would review these along with the company's other.
And what was this company's timeline for completion again? I forgot from last month. Four months?
Okay, once the supplement is complete, a hundred and forty-five business days to complete the editorial and legal analysis, based on current production schedule. They'd be able to complete that in less time, approximately two to three months from the completion of the supplement, so.
Do you feel that update is required or needed when there's old statutes?
Well, it's hard to enforce things if they're not.
Not up to current.
Yeah, in fact, it was a recommendation of, of the last certification course for inspections and stuff for fire, was to update your ordinances and make sure you're.
And Bill Lane, Inspector Tracy Johnson will recommend that.
Not that we have any.
And this is because the state has got together with the League of Municipalities and groomed up these new codes and ordinances.
I, it, it changes with governmental body changes, or new governor wants SPS instead of Department of, and, and that's changed over the years quite a few times, no matter who it is, right? So, that's what happens, they, "Oh, I got a better idea."
So, those, those don't supersede our codes, and we have to go with them anyway? We have to, we have to adopt those?
Yep, we have to adopt them for enforcement. Now, we can annually do that, and just go through it ourselves and do that. But I think you'd be better off to look at all of it and just.
Get it on.
Because it's been two thousand?
Two thousand and three.
Three?
Almost twenty years.
And the police officers said that they can't draw from their Dane County ordinances, because the code that they input on the ticket would then tell the person who processes the tickets that that revenue goes to Dane County. But the code that they use to enforce our municipal ticket tells that person that processes the tickets, at the end of the day, that it goes to us. So, we.
Yeah, they get silver, I take it, we just wouldn't get the revenue.
We don't get the revenue, yeah.
Until we change our code.
Which would be silly, so.
Where else do we run into issues with? Those two, does Tracy, does he complain about them at all, or does he?
No, they just need to make sure that they're referenced to the correct, what do you call it? I'm going to say DSPF, but I don't.
SPS.
SPSF.
Safety and professional services now, yep.
That helps him too.
Oh, gosh, yes.
Yeah.
Twelve dollars more to ask to do the court update?
What's that?
Five thousand something to do the court.
Five thousand one ninety-four.
And you said if we, if we disagree with something, they're going to show us draft as we, as they go, thing?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we go ahead and do it for five thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars to get it started.
A second.
A second. Jared, go ahead.
Joshie.
Jared, Jared, you can do it.
Yeah, because he said at first it could take longer.
Yeah, exactly, come through the line there, yeah.
All right, so a motion by Mitch and a second by Jared. Any more discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? One more, any motion passes? Five E, discussion action on annual library report.
Well, let's just discuss it.
All right.
Let's just discuss it.
Let's just discuss it. The, uh, the action that they're just, just because of, sort of, something away.
Either or.
All right, Jared?
I don't, I don't have anything to discuss, other than the message that I sent you and Kelly.
Okay.
That you're absolutely right, is there is no asking for a report at all, just because there's a GCI, and there's people that need approval. It should be just a discussion on the agenda.
Is there any, in the report you want to point out?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not right by the direction of the messages.
All right. Are you able to take questions on the report?
I, I can give it a shot.
Are there any questions at all on the report?
Especially if something was mentioned earlier. Thank you. Yep. If I was to try to come up with something off the top of my head, I would say the biggest change is going to be the effect that COVID has on our learning levels. Since circulation is down because people aren't coming in on a whim, that's going to affect the, on the way. Rolling average, or I think what we call.
Is that? No, I think it's in there, maybe not that. It's, I think it's, I think it's the five.
Oh.
Yeah. Which page are you looking at?
Oh, I was looking at, it's the library operating revenue. I don't know what page this is, it's probably in the middle. I just, I saw the Iowa County, Columbia County, Sauk County, and I was looking for Dane County. I'm sure I just pointed it out, it's, I think it's that home county in letter A, is Dane County portion? That was my question.
All right, agenda five E, discussion action on recognizing Linda Weber's village totals for website. Just want to bring this, but, um, a lot of the pics, some of the pictures on the website were taken by a resident. And I think that residents spent some time, fair amount of time, taking pictures and such, and wanted to discuss whether the board would like to extend some kind of gratitude.
Yeah, she probably took at least a hundred photos. They're all over to our website company. We'll see more of them, probably as we roll out and also be seasonal. We had a challenge of getting the right pixels on the photos that are needed for the website. She was awesome, she was a rock star.
That, I think she was more so volunteer than volunteered herself and, and want to say no.
I, I called her based on an awesome recommendation, and she's like, "Sure." And she actually already had a whole bunch already.
I mean, normally, when we do business bucks or give children to dinner or something, usually we win that.
It's been a long time.
With his name going into flowers and stuff, usually we give.
We could do that, we could do the, um, do the chamber, we could do the.
Business bucks?
Business bucks, or whatever they call them.
I think that'd be the best, would be business bucks.
Sure.
Anyway, I tipped you a hundred bucks.
I would say at least.
Hundred, I guess, I don't know what those pictures were worth, if we had, did we need the pictures and who would have hired it, what would it cost us?
Change out those house pictures, remember?
I don't think a hundred dollars' worth of business bucks is out of the question at all.
Was that?
I don't think a hundred dollars is out of, is out of line, that she did. So, I'd make the motion that we go through a chamber to provide a hundred dollars' worth of business bucks for Linda Weber, and thank her very much for her time and her volunteerism on the website upgrade pictures.
Motion by Scott and a second by James, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion passes, thank you. And then, item five, discussion action on garbage recycling contracts.
All right, I'm bringing this up because we got our last bill for garbage recycling, and we noticed there were additional charges. There was almost a thousand dollars in extra charges per week. And when I called the company, they stated that this was a fee that they needed to implement because recycling, they're getting charged more for recycling. And it says, "Well, your contract specifically states that there are no additional fees to be charged to the village." It was a seven-year contract, and I reminded them that our contract was set to expire this year. He was going to give me an updated contract for us to look at this evening that included automated garbage pickup. And I says, "Well, I'm not so certain the village would support that right now. I think that we're going to have to go out for an RFP for garbage services, since our contract is up." He did not get anything to me as far as addressing the extra charges either. So, I am making you aware that this is going on. I have not seen anything from our contractor. He understood that we were going to be paying only what the contract agreement was for, and I have not heard back from him.
When's the actual contract, though?
Uh, the end of the year.
End of the year?
Yep.
So, we got time.
Yep, I'm going to recommend we go out for an RFP probably in August, before budget, that we have that information back. If some of you might remember, that first year I was here, we did five different RFPs for the auditor, the assessor, and attorney, and the garbage. We renegotiated five different contracts, so I have that already set from that, we can just update and change.
What were the other companies, I guess, around?
Um, Advanced Disposal, Tim's Trucking, Tim's.
Because I've heard nightmares from people in Maisel talking about the automated one.
Yeah.
You know, basically, you can only have whatever's in your one garbage can, you can only have, got to be certain spots, you know, all these different things that go on.
And that's kind of weird, because Town and Country, they gave us a really good, a really good deal. For seven years. Well, actually, that actually did the ten year.
Last time, it seemed like they wanted us to stay with the system we had.
Yeah.
And he originally wanted to give me a contract tonight for the automated system for another seven years, and I said, "No, I can't do that." Because of the expense of the contract, I have to go out for a bit. That stayed off.
Well, I think we should look at all options anyways.
I think the rest of them all were automated at that time, too. I think Town and Country was the only one that was not, if I can remember correctly.
Yeah, but he has since gone, and he's like, "Well, to keep your contract, you know, down, if you go automated, it's going to save you a lot of money, because you're not going to have, you know, the people that we have to pay for." And I'm like, "Yeah, but this is recycling fee that you're charging me for, not for the garbage fee, so." So, I don't have anything in hand to hand out tonight, but I'm making you aware that that's what's going on right now.
Not that it's time for this, but a senior citizen stopped by and just said that she heard nightmares from a friend of hers that lives, I don't remember where, that the, the bins are so big that elderly and people with mobility issues have problems taking them out. But that another friend of hers lives in a community where the bins are half the height, like, more normal size for a person's weekly debris. And she said that would be something for the board to consider if they're going to go automated, so that it's not that big hulking one. But there is actually a half size.
Well, they've been doing the recycle bin, the big ones, because they do every other week instead of weekly, like we have now.
It's just a comment that she made, something to consider that our, our elderly that are here are going to be able to.
Half size.
She said when the wind, who, her friend said, "The wind will just take it right out of her arms."
And transfer size.
And why didn't you send us, because our people, we did a survey out there, about what they wanted to see.
It's been a long time to set a bag next to you or whatever.
All right, I'm on agenda five E, we'll discuss that when we have a contract. Discussion action on communications with residents, Facebook.
So, I think, yep. Because I think we were supposed to look at the village across.
And you sent out an email, I'm sorry, anybody, if you could, or, I'm sorry, Facebook, that was.
That's finished, um, sent out the link to that.
Are you going to be able to do video, or is it just going to be audio?
Uh, it, I'm sure it has.
Well, the last, the YouTube one was just audio, the last, that's all I could find.
Yes, it could depend on when, like, it pops up.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know if you, if anyone has looked at, um, any of the community's recommendations for Facebook. About some things that we, I know we kinda left it up, talk about next time.
Well, I think once we all get back in person and these things come off, like in Texas and North Dakota and all these other places, it'd be a lot easier to film it. It's on Facebook. Right now, we've gotta deal with this. I did look at the, I did look at it and, you know, it was black, 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 and all of a sudden somebody was talking, picture popped up. Not really conducive to holding an audience, you know, so I'd say let's ride with this.
Well, that was YouTube. She's bringing it on Facebook now.
What's that?
That was YouTube, but she's bringing it on Facebook now.
I'm sorry.
So.
That was fine.
So the Facebook, what, what we're trying to figure out is, is this is gonna be comment?
Or if we want to have, the village have one.
At one point, I think it's before you were on, we kinda explored the options we were looking at, especially when COVID came on, all these other areas where, you know, that's how they were communicating their things. Parks are closed. This is what we're doing. You know, we've looked at how our village and how we can communicate with, you know, people on social media these days and say, let's just say we wanna get, for example, when we had the outage of the substation.
Right.
Help people abroad, you know, or anything, keeping people to date with what's going on in schools or what's going on in the village. So it's one of those things that just kinda got tabled. We had Stephanie Sims, uh, a while back, she came in and talked to the EDC committee and she does it actually for, she works for a company that handles like the schools, Facebook page, and they do a lot of educational facilities. So she kinda gave us pricing if she was to come in or her company, their companies come in and take care of the Facebook page. They regulate it. They mandate what can go on there. They have all these different things that, you know, people can't put negative comments on. That's the only thing right now is that if we're gonna take it on the responsibility and we're gonna take it on personally, someone's gotta be able to know what they're doing to set up the and monitor it, you know, so people aren't posting inappropriate things on there and how it all transpires. So it's, it was kind of a discussion as far as what risk does the village wanna take, but what rewards are we gonna hit out of it, how we manage it all, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I probably.
Can you reply to any of those concerns? Is there some of those risks we can eliminate?
Um, I mean, there's always people are weird on social media sometimes.
But can, we don't need a response, right? Can we?
Yeah, we can mute comments.
Nobody can respond, right? Or no?
I don't know, fully. I don't think it's a terrible thing to have comments on there. I see, you're gonna, I'm, valid press links, I follow their page and people are, they'll ask questions.
Can, can you have, so can I ask you comments that aren't posted publicly until they're approved?
I'd have to look into it, yeah.
I'm pretty sure Stephanie, yes, that was a thing of like, and that's what she would do or a service would do is they, they, they would view everything and then agree, they, they can agree what's posted and what's not posted.
They'd administer the site for us.
Yeah, so, and it's, it's one of those things that we just said, well, it comes back to the whole thing. As we look at the cost and we say, okay, we think this is a benefit to the village. And then we look at the cost breakdown and we start saying, okay, well, we can do it internally. It's gonna cost us time and whatever we're paying for that. Or it's, or we're gonna spend thirty-five hundred dollars or budget thirty-five hundred dollars or whatever it was a year, come out of a committee's budget or whatever it be to, you know, cause it could come out of half of the EDCs, half of emergency management, half of whatever we feel, parks, you know, and you could split it up. And I, I believe, didn't we budget something for it? One of the, one of the committees?
EDC has money for the others too, but I think, I think we're to the point where we could do it and how is it just a matter of the information.
If we had a, a third party monitor it, we'd have as much involvement, but we'd still have some. If there was a question, then that would have to move forward to us. How do we answer it?
Yeah, and one of them becomes a legal question, but we can't answer.
I guess we need to decide how we wanna use it, know, determine what kind of systems they might.
What you go off, just for other people's webpage, personally, right?
Might recommend that until we have our risk and liability training, we walk on that, cause I think he may address cybersecurity and some of those social media questions.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Let's have that first.
I'll just carry this over to next agenda. Do we need to postpone or table this? Or make an agenda item?
I say we table it until.
All right, so motion table, all second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Sorry, Jared.
Don't worry.
All right, five H, consideration motion entering the closed session pursuant to statute nineteen point eight five, front one. He delivering or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investigating of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. And F, considering handle of medical, social, personal histories, disciplinary actions, sorry, disciplinary data, specific persons, disciplinary duration, specific personnel problems, investigation charges against specific persons, except where current D. Clues which if discussed in public would likely have substantial adverse impact on reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. Roll call vote, please.
Before we do this, we're gonna ask those on our Zoom meeting that, once we enter into closed session, you will be, um, asked to please leave our Zoom meeting at this time. We'll give you a couple minutes to disconnect.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Selective.
All right, so we have a motion by Mitch and a second by Scott.
All right, um. Jared Bramerson?
Here.
Gary Scott?
Here.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, sorry. I followed.
Josh Hattens?
Yes.
Dean Coyle?
Yes.
Josh Wall?
Yes.
Mitch Hudson?
Yes.
Charlie Ether.
Yes. All right, I'll be answering in close session.
We still have somebody on the line.
Yeah, we do.
Did you have something?
I, um.
Gary has.
Do you have any idea approximately how long it's gonna be?
The rest.
Probably like a half hour. I, did you say eight and a half or half? I heard eight and a half.
I'm gonna leave now.
Okay.
You know, we're a good thing. If you take me, you take. And you, Kelly, I didn't recognize you because your haircut.
Yes, it has.